To order, this meeting of the Town of Auburn of the Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the Department of Open Meeting Laws. All meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of this meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123, using access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Permitting me confirm that all members in persons anticipated on the agendas are present and can hear me. Members, Mr. Carpenter?
Sarah says she can't hear anything.
Ms. Roofley?
She just got a text. Dawn?
I think we're all muted.
It seems to be...
You can.
Okay. So Sarah, it seems like you're the only one that can't hear, right? You still can't hear? All right, I'm gonna have her call in. I think it's on her end. All right, she's gonna call in. I think it's on her end.
Can you guys hear me now? I just called in.
Yes.
Yep. Can you hear us?
Okay. Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Awesome.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so Ms. Roofley, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the law.
All right, so first order of business, a little bittersweet, but we we have from the Board of Selectmen, a proclamation here for Ms. Jacobson's years of service here to the town. And I'll just read it aloud, it is a little bit, so bear with me here. Whereas Julie Jacobson, who is retiring on January 30th, 2023, has given 37 years of dedicated public service. Whereas Ms. Julie Jacobson has spent the last 12 years as the Auburn Town Manager here in Auburn, Mass., and was instrumental in the successful or unsuccessful in the implementation of the new amended Town Charter and the reorganization of various departments within municipal government. Whereas Ms. Jacobson, through her professional leadership, navigated Auburn to the best financial standing in the town's history, created economic development and invested opportunities for commercial and industrial businesses, and most notably recognized for securing millions of dollars in federal, state, and private grants that helped create employment and growth without relying on additional local taxation. Whereas Ms. Jacobson has earned the respect of her peers by her distinguished leadership as MMA president over the past two years. I learned recently that she was the only person to serve two years. And her continued professional contributions that have benefited many communities throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas Ms. Jacobson performed her duties and responsibilities as Town Manager in a professional manner by being honest and trustworthy, promoting team building, motivation, resolving conflict, and being empathetic and sincere when dealing with employee challenges and issues. We therefore, the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of all town employees and citizens of Auburn, hereby wish Julie Jacobson a healthy and prosperous retirement and express our sincere appreciation to Ms. Julie Jacobson for her loyal and distinguished service as Auburn's first Town Manager and making Auburn a more desirable place to reside, work, and visit since her coming here in 2011. With that, I present this to Ms. Jacobson. Flowers here.
Oh, my word.
And we do have some folks that would like to speak and give you some well wishes. First off, I believe, Ms. Goodrich?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Doreen Goodrich. I know I only have a couple of minutes, and it's hard to wrap 12 years into a couple of minutes. So I'm just gonna touch on a couple of key points. When I first had the opportunity to hire a new Town Manager, I had an interview set up with Ms. Julie Jacobson. I never expected, in my wildest dreams, what that interview would be. I had interviewed many, many candidates for Town Manager, and I met with Ms. Jacobson, and she had studied the Town Charter. She had read every article there was available to understand what the voters wanted in this Town Charter. She knew exactly what the voters wanted, what form of government they wanted. So she presented with a binder like this, with a reorg plan, like she knew Auburn like the back of her hand. And I knew from that day that she wanted to be part of Auburn, and she won me over that day. So, fast forward my years on the Board of Selectmen. She, I'm not gonna get into everything else that we've talked about, whether it's reorg plans or hiring the best leadership team in the state. Some of the finest municipal employees in the state. I mean, that goes without saying. But her initiatives, her community involvement, the tree lighting, the, you know, we had COVID, and she organized a trunk or treat. We participate in the Special Olympics, you know, Independence Day. Whatever it is, she's really community-oriented. But on a personal level, you know, I am in awe of the Town Manager. I attended, more than I can count, the number of Mass. Municipal Association meetings I attended. And she is one of the highest-respected leaders in the state. And every meeting, she introduced me as her boss. She never made me feel less. You know, I look at her credits and her education, and I say, you know, I continue to attend the College of Lifelong Learning, you know? But she always made me feel that my input mattered, that my thoughts mattered. She came to me for my opinion, me. This woman who was sought after throughout the Commonwealth, and she came to me, her Chairman of the Board, and said, "I wanna run something by you." And it was sincere. Julie loves the Town of Auburn. Auburn will always be a part of her. And I thank her for what she did for me for my years on the Board. I wish her well in her retirement. I know her family. I know that she's gonna enjoy every minute with those grandchildren. You know, people keep saying, "Ed, you have big shoes to fill." You don't have big shoes to fill, you just have big shoes to follow. And Julie has given you the opportunity, in your professional career, to grow and be the best Town Manager. I know you will be, because that's what she does in her leadership team. She brings the best of people out. She makes people, you know, it sounds like a Jack Nicholson movie, you know? She makes people wanna be the best person they can be. And it's so true. And Julie, you're gonna be missed, but this is such a well-deserved retirement. 37 years of public service. It takes a special person to be in public service that long. And congratulations on your last meeting.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the matter? No? Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll be very brief too, but I just wanna thank all of you. Especially, especially wanna thank every employee in the town. It's really been my honor and my pleasure to work with this talented team of individuals from the department heads to the division heads to every last employee. We have something special. We work really well together, and I think the results of that have shown in the town. It's been my privilege to serve in this role. I may be the leader in the role, but you are all the people that get it all done. So I know I get credit, but I really wanna give it right back at all of you, because it gets done because of who you all are and all the work that you do. And I can never, ever thank you enough. And to the Board, and previous Boards, former Boards, all the Board members, I wanna thank you for giving me this opportunity. Best opportunity of my life to come here to Auburn. I've never regretted it for a day. The hardest part is leaving, knowing that in a week I'll wake up and I won't be here doing this. But it's been a great 12 years. It's really been a lot of interesting things. We've had some good laughs. We've had some very tragic times that we've all gotten through. And just wanna thank you all for being there. It's been a great Board, and too many people to thank, but Board and Commission members, Town Meeting members. It's really, thank you for making my time here really special. And Doreen's right, Auburn will always, always hold a special place in my heart. It's a wonderful community. I know Ed's gonna do a bang-up job moving forward. We make a great team. We've worked together really closely for 12 years. So all these things that we've all worked on together are gonna continue. So I thank you all for your dedication, commitment to Auburn, for the umpteen hours that you put in, over and above what you have to do every day. It doesn't go unnoticed absolutely by me and most certainly by the residents when they look and see what you've all done. So we do have a great community, and I just wanna thank you all.
I already got my chance to speak at the event the other night, but again, you are absolutely one of a kind. This year, I've really gotten to see how much work is required of a Town Manager. And I think Doreen said it best. I mean, I'm in awe. It's just you are the best of the best, so thank you.
Thank you. That's nice. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, no further comments on the matter? Seeing then, we are going to public hearings presentations. We have Flex Car LLC Motor Vehicle Class II and Auto Repair Licenses at 525 Washington Street in Auburn. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over that. My apologies. All right, Citizens' Comments. We have, do you know who that's? Marsha Ofkowsick of 17 Mountview Ave. Good evening.
We're here tonight to address the issues we have with the two double-sided electronic billboards that loom over our neighborhood. I'm gonna read this because I don't wanna get emotional and I don't wanna get angry. But we have 23 signatures of homeowners whose quality of life, physical health, and property values have been adversely affected by these signs. I know there are other people in town that see them, but not like us. We're the ones that reach out and touch them. Some of us see the signs, one sign. Some see both sides of one sign, and others see both signs. Some of us see them 12 months out of the year, and others at least eight months. Some of us can't sleep at night because of the intrusive beaming bright light in our bedrooms. Some of us have light reflecting through our living rooms, dens, kitchens, and off-adjacent properties. Some of us can't even enjoy our yards. A number of us have lived in town for 30, 40, or 50-plus years. I think it's important that you understand why you have never heard our voices at any of the meetings during the permitting process. The last we heard of the billboards, construction had been denied. Apparently, it was brought back, as many believe, under the darkness of night or COVID. I have spoken to residents in all parts of town who are also surprised to see the electronic billboards appear. We also understand that the town receives some compensation for allowing the signs. Can you tell me what that is, what that compensation was?
I don't recall specifically. I believe it was $100,000 per sign?
Do you want me to? So a couple of things. So we, there were a total of 10 public hearings. The project was never denied. There were two different aspects to it. One is the regional law, OVA District Bylaw. That was denied at Town Meeting the first time. We went back and made changes to the bylaw that some Town Meeting members had asked for. We had another meeting, a pre-Town Meeting meeting, that about 30 Town Meeting members came to. Then it went back to Town Meeting again. And I believe that was approved at Town Meeting in 2017, October 2017. So that was three years before COVID. So that was...
We never heard of it. We heard that it was denied. Evidently, it was the bylaw that was denied, but never heard it.
So it did go back, and it was advertised. It was posted. We followed all the public requirements. We actually had electronic signs out, letting people know that we were having a meeting on this.
We never heard of anything. Nobody ever visited our neighborhood. Nobody ever knocked on our doors.
And if I may, then from there, it went to the Planning Board, not the bylaw. The bylaw went to the Planning Board twice, and they approved it both times at a public hearing that was advertised. And then there were seven or eight additional meetings after that, including two Planning Board meetings, one to approve the project under one particular company that owned it. They were out of Canada, and they received approvals. That project did get delayed because of COVID. It did not get denied. It was approved. They delayed it, and then they sold to another company. The next company came in with the exact same plan, went back to the Planning Board, and refilled, because it had been two years. There was another public hearing, and it was approved at that public hearing. The town received a donation from the developer. It is not, it's not an exchange. It's not compensation. It's a donation. It wasn't a mitigation payment. We don't do that. It's a donation. The donation is $50,000, $25,000 per sign for a period of 20 years with a payment upfront over the first five years. So when the first billboard went up, we received $125,000, which represents five years of $25,000 each. When the second one goes up, it would be the same thing. Those funds are gonna be put back into, eventually into the town, into Drury Square, into some things that are going on in that area. But I would say that 10 public hearings, advertisements, warrants on Town Meetings, Auburn Cable TV, newsletter, social media, we did have it out there. So I apologize that you didn't hear, but other than going door-to-door throughout the entire town, we advertised it as best as we could and within the law.
Can I ask you, did anyone ever come to the neighborhood and see what was going on in our neighborhood? Or see how those signs are so high? I mean, I have pictures here that you will not believe. We just never heard of it. All of us had never heard of it.
Through the Chair, I would say that if there's, right now, there is a regional bylaw in place, and if there's any violation, that bylaw does have things in place that control the lumens, in other words, control the ambient lighting that comes from that. So if there is a question as to that ambient lighting being higher than the allowable lumens under the bylaw, then the Building Commissioner can take a look at it and talk to them all about that.
Well, that's one of the things we want to have done. And also, we'd like a sound engineer. Because since those signs have been up, it has been so loud up there because of the reverberation off the signs. Also, we'd like them to be lowered, like highway noise. Could they be lowered at least 20 feet?
Through the Chair, I do not, they cannot, it was already approved at the Planning Board. It was already approved at Town Meeting.
Actually, we'd like them removed.
So I'm sorry, but that was already approved. They've already made an investment in that. But I would tell you, perhaps some of the reason you may hear more noise isn't because of the signs. The Mass. Department of Transportation went in and did some pruning of the trees that had died right near the buffer. They left a buffer, and they pruned the trees. Because I remember getting noticed that they were going to prune some of the trees near the mall because they were afraid that they were gonna fall on the highway.
We are beyond the mall. We're all up.
But that opened up, that might have opened up some type of sound. I don't believe the signs give off a sound.
And also, we'd like the town to hire a qualified appraiser so that a fair adjustment for external obsolescence can be applied to our real estate tax assessment. And I just wanted to note, and I don't know if any of you had done studies on billboards, but there have been studies in various states over the years about the effects on human health, nature, wildlife, and bird migration. I have pictures, and the pictures don't tell the story. I would invite any of you to come up any night, anytime. I will take you around the neighborhood and show you exactly what we go through. And also, I heard, or I read after the fact that, I guess, one of the media reps said that this would only affect four or five properties. I don't know what effect means, but affecting just one property, property owners who've worked for years to get their properties, live in their homes, and have to go through this, it's not good. And especially where we don't sleep at night. I mean, I have pictures of where, I look out my window, the light is bouncing off my neighbor's living room window. It goes right through our homes, reflects in the back. A lot of them can't sleep at night. It shines right in their windows. So I wanna give you the names of the 23 neighbors, and also these pictures. And also, one of my neighbors had given me this at the meeting from Mass. DOT about control and restriction of billboards. Did anybody go over that, or? So we need help. We're asking for help.
Through the Chair, if I can just make a recommendation for the, to ask Town Administration to look into that with regard to any kind of violation of the bylaw. That would be the only thing that the town would look.
Conditions placed on it as well?
Yeah. If any, we can look at that. But the bylaw was pretty specific. It was done in accordance with Mass. Department of Transportation, which oversees the state's regulations of billboards. So the bylaw matches the state regulations. So the town does not allow anything that is not allowed at the state.
Do you really think those look nice? I mean, they're all centralized, like beyond Central Square and everything. Then you're looking, you're looking at those. But would somebody be willing to come so we can show them around the neighborhood?
I believe we'll have Town Administration come take a look at it to see if any of the bylaw or if any of the planning board conditions, when it was approved, are being violated.
Would any of you be willing to come?
We're not really operations people. I don't know that there'd be anything that I'd be able to do to come see it. I take you at your word. So, you know, I understand, but I think we'd have to wanna have the experts take a look at it.
So you'd get in touch with one of us, or get in touch with?
You'll likely see them in the neighborhood taking a look in the evenings, just to see again if...
But would you get ahold of me so I can tell my neighbors what's going on?
The report will come back to you.
Okay. The report will come back to us. We'll have the Town Administration report back to us. So you'll see it, and we'll put it on for another meeting to review this.
Can I just another thing?
If you could just go to the microphone.
Somebody said that they were supposed to be turned off at night. But I remember a couple nights or for a couple weeks, they went off like at midnight. But now I know they're on constantly.
Yeah. We have to take a look at the bylaw. I mean, without having it right in front of me, it's tough for me to really, you know, give you any kind of solid...
I could stand here and cry. That's how bad it is.
I understand, and you know, certainly, we will have it taken, we'll have a look at for you. Thank you.
Have any of you seen it at night?
Not from your neighborhood. I've seen it from Route 12, surely, but not from the Mountview neighborhood. Do we wanna make a motion to put this on for another day?
I wanna make a motion that we request the Town Administration to look into this situation and report back to the Board at the most immediate meeting that they can do so. And we contact the neighbors to let them know when we're going to hear.
Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the Chair is a yes. It is a vote. And next, we have Darlene Coyle with DDIS.
Good evening. Darlene Coyle from Inspection Services and Development. And I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. In collaboration with the Auburn Public Schools, we're gonna be offering a flu clinic, a flu vaccine clinic, and that's gonna be this Thursday, January 26, and from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Auburn High School in the presentation room right on the first floor. There's a lot of sickness going around right now, and we'd like to offer another flu clinic for anybody interested. So if anybody would like to get more information, they're welcome to call either the schools or the Board of Health, and we can get you directed to register ahead of time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. And moving on, we have public hearings. We have, again, Flex Car LLC Motor Vehicle Class II and Auto Repair Licenses at 525 Washington Street in Auburn, Mass. Do we have a motion to open the hearing? Second. Motion and a second. Mr. Chambers? Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the Chair is a yes. Do we have anyone presenting from Flex Car LLC this evening? You can just go to the podium and give your name and address.
Flex Car. Our business address is 200 Pier 4 Boulevard, Boston, Massachusetts.
All right. And what are you looking to do here?
So we have a signed agreement on the property located at 525 Washington Street. We, I'm happy to provide information about our business or our use of the site, whatever would be most helpful to you.
Yeah, just about the business in general.
So Flex Car is a vehicle subscription service. We offer a low-hassle way for our customers to always have access to a car without the long-term commitment of actually owning a car. So we sell weekly vehicle subscriptions with no long-term commitment, and our customers don't have any sort of maintenance or insurance obligations. We're a young company. We're less than two years old, but we're an Ava subsidiary, so we're affiliated with a longstanding company. We are growing nationally. We're actually a Boston-based business, though, and we're excited about this site because it'll give us a chance to further expand it to New England. This site would serve as a hub for Flex Car, where we would service and maintain vehicles that would then be taken out to other parts of New England. So currently, we have a distribution lot and pickup locations around the city of Boston, and we're looking to expand it to other parts of New England. By operating here in Auburn, being centrally located in New England, we'd be able to serve other markets in the New England area by distributing cars from this location out to other areas once they've been serviced and between customers using the vehicles.
Any questions from the Board members? No? Town Administration?
All set.
All set. Any questions from the public? Yes.
Just a question. Is this basically the same thing like they do out to?
Just give your name and address.
Danny Lodge, his third name, third place. Is this basically the same thing that they do out in Boston and the Cape, where you put a long-term lease, like on a boat? And you can just call them up and say, "Okay, I need a boat," and you can take the boat for the week or the weekend or whatever, and then you just drop it back off?
So it's similar. So we sell...
If you could just use the mic too, just so we have people online.
This concept is used, some new car manufacturers do it, some boat companies do it. So it's a similar concept. Most of our customers come into the program and stay for several months and look at it as more than just like a week-to-week type of thing. But that's an option as well, that if someone just has a need for a vehicle for a couple weeks and it doesn't make sense to do a short-term rental, then this is an option for those customers.
Thank you. Any improvements to the physical property itself, or just the business?
Yes, sir. So we will be doing some renovation work at the site. We'll be making some aesthetic improvements to the outside of the building, including painting and new signs. We will also be improving the security of the site with a new gate and replacing some fencing. We discussed this with the DCG, and understand we'll need to come in for a minor site plan modification to have those improvements permitted. And we'll also be making some minor renovations to the inside of the building as well.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close the hearing? Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes. Do we have a further motion?
Make a motion and we approve the license.
Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes. Thank you, sir. All set. All right, moving on, we have Apple New England LLC. It's Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, change of manager at 680 Southbridge Street in Auburn, Mass. And again, we'll need a motion to open the hearing. Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Okay, do we have the, anyone presenting for Applebee's?
Yes, I'm on the phone.
Oh, yes. If you could just give your...
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you could just give your information for us, and then tell us a little bit about the application.
My name is Jessica Rooney, and I'm looking for a change of manager on the liquor license for Applebee's.
Okay, all right. And do we have any questions from the board members? No? Town administration?
All set.
All set. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the hearing? Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes, and we have a further... Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes, it is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Communications, we have none. So to Select Board General Items under 6A, we have a vote to confirm manager's recommendation of Assistant Town Manager/Human Resources Director. And with that, I will hand it over.
My pleasure, thank you. Thank you. I'm very happy this evening to be here to recommend to the board a vote to confirm Dory Vecchio as the next Assistant Town Manager/HR Human Resources Director. Just for people to know, under Section 3 Plan 06A of the charter, the Board of Selectmen have to confirm appointments of department heads. And as the Assistant Town Manager/HR Director, this position is a department head. So we're here before you tonight to seek your confirmation. I am thrilled and honored to recommend Dory Vecchio for this position. I, as you know, I will be retiring. A week from today is my last day, and Ed will be the next town manager. So really, this is Ed's appointment, and this is Ed's decision, but I wholeheartedly concur with this, and because I'm still here, I'm bringing it before you under me tonight. But this is something that Ed and I both are in 100% agreement, and I think I can speak for the school superintendent as well, who participated in the interview process. We interviewed eight great candidates. We were so fortunate to get a good slate of candidates, and Dr. Chamberlain, myself, and Ed all ranked Ms. Vecchio as number-one candidate. Just by way of a little bit of background, there was a memo in your packet, but if you don't mind, I'll call her Dory. Dory was, is currently the Town Administrator in Blackstone, and she's been there for a little over a year and a half, manages everything for the town as a Town Administrator does, works on all levels, and she's also their HR Director according to the charter. Prior to her Blackstone experience, she worked for the City of Worcester for 23 years. So I actually met Dory when I first started, when Dory first started there in the City Manager's Office. I had already been there for years. I got promoted to the Assistant City Manager position, and when I got there, the current, this City Manager at the time brought Dory over to be the Director of Administration for his, in operations in the City Manager's Office. She then went on to become a Grants Manager, a Budget Director, the Finance Director for the Worcester Redevelopment Authority, and then became, ultimately became the Human Resources Director, where she worked for nine years for the City of Worcester. So our position here is Assistant Town Manager/Human Resources Director. We have a new Human Resource Department that's going to be combined with the School Department. So Dory would be overseeing that whole effort, and it is a brand-new effort, which is why we brought the School Superintendent in on, because we felt this is important for this position to work well with the School Superintendent. So Dory has managed grants, she's done collective bargaining, anything you can imagine that a town administrator would do or an HR Director in a city that's the second-largest city in New England, Dory's done it. She's tremendous. She's a member of a number of different professional organizations. She's trained, skilled, certified in many different HR components. She's an MMA member, an MMMA member, an ICMA member, which I know all that's alphabet soup, but I can tell you that those are important professional memberships to hold when you have a position like this. So I wholeheartedly recommend it, and I just want to ask Ed if he wants to say a few words, because Dory would be Ed's second-hand person.
Julie, thank you for carrying this into the board tonight. I'm really excited about the opportunity to work with Dory. As someone with her talent and skills, you don't know how fortunate we are to be able to offer her the job, and I'm excited, looking forward to working with Dory. And like Julie said, as serving as Town Administrator and former HR Director in the City of Worcester, she can deal with any and all issues on a day-to-day basis beyond HR, and that's an important aspect of the position. So Dory can come in and understand the issues that we face with on a day-to-day basis. And I, like Julie and the School Superintendent, we unanimously selected Dory as our number-one choice, so I'm happy to make that recommendation as well.
I know that when deciding what was needed, when they said, "We want HR and this town leadership experience", I don't know if you could find that. You did, so good job.
Thank you. And I'd like to point out, Dory is here with us. Dory, if you can just give the wave so that we'll know who we are.
Okay, so with that, do we have any questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Roofley, no questions? No? All right, do we have a...
You don't find that...
Okay.
I think there's a delay. This one's there. A little delay.
Do we have a motion to take a vote to confirm the recommendation of the Assistant Town Manager/Human Resources Director? Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 6B. We have a vote to appoint the Town Accountants. That's you, Ms. Chambers.
Great, thank you. Again, for those watching, there are actually two votes that are going to be required. The first one is a vote for the Town Accountant. Under Mass General Law, the Town Accountant is appointed by the Board of Selectmen, so that requires one vote. Here, we have a combined position of Town Accountant/Chief Financial Officer. Chief Financial Officer is a position that Ed now holds along with the Assistant Town Manager. So you can see there's a little shuffling, trying to make the best use of everyone's skillset. Ed needs to move into my role, and then he needs a strong CFO/Town Accountant. So that requires a second vote, because the CFO is actually a department head and oversees the Finance Department, which is the Assessing Office, the Accounting Office, and the Trade Collector's Office. So the first vote you have is for the Town Accountant. So we are very thrilled. We went through an interview process, and we are so thrilled. Karen Harneus is our recommendation for appointment to this position. Karen has been almost 19 years with the Town of Southridge as the Finance Director/Town Accountant. Without looking down at my notes, and I remember reading through the resume, we interviewed her, she did great. She did eight years as the Town Accountant in Ashland. Thank you. And then, prior to that, she also was in the City of Worcester at the same time I was many years ago, and we were in the same department, different divisions, but as with Dory, I just remember that Karen at the time was in managing finances with the block grant program. So she has a lot of experience, and I can speak very highly of Karen's experience then. Also, I have only worked with her a little bit in limited capacity over the last few years. We do a couple of things with Southridge, a couple of regional initiatives, so I've seen Karen off and on, but not that often. So I was thrilled when her resume came before us. Again, Karen did excellent in the interviews. We think she's got the experience that's needed. She's very familiar with our software program, which is Munis, same thing that Southridge uses, and has gone through many of the same things that we have. Karen also, like Dory, Karen has a bachelor's degree, she has a master's degree. She is a CPA, a Certified Public Accountant. She's also a Certified Government Accountant, which is really important, because not every CPA can transition and be a municipal Town Accountant or Municipal Director. It's two different fields. So she has all of the qualifications and beyond. And I will tell you that her Town Manager currently in Southridge speaks very highly of her. He told me that Auburn was very lucky to be getting Karen Harneus. So I'm here, again, this is my appointment for now, but technically, the Town Accountant for this first vote is your appointment, and then the CFO/Town Accountant would be Ed's. And like previous votes with DeMoss, because our Labor Council has recommended that, obviously, the Town Accountant report to Ed, which this position does anyway, would report to the Town Manager. So Ed, do you want to...
Sure. So what I'd like to say is Karen, like Dory, we are so fortunate to get you. Karen stood out above everyone else that we interviewed. Her credentials and experience is quite impressive when you look at her resume. She checks all the boxes, and she has what we need for experience in the Finance Division. So Karen, I look forward to working with you as well, and I'm wholeheartedly recommending Karen for appointment to be Assistant Accountant and CFO.
Any questions of the board members? Seeing none, do we have a motion on the appointment? For Town Accountant, we're going to do 6B first. Harneus? Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes, that is a vote. Congratulations. Now we have a vote to confirm the manager's recommendation of the Chief Financial Officer. I don't think there's really anything else to add on your end. So do we have a motion? Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Now we have Agenda Item 6D, Drain Layer License for GH Excavation Incorporated of Spencer, Massachusetts. You guys had this in your packets. Yep, okay, all right. Yep, you don't have to say candidates for it. You don't have candidates anymore, right?
That's true, the point is...
Or you're welcome to stay, it's your decision. All right, so did everyone get a chance to review the drain layer license? Any questions? Nope? All right. Town administration, no questions?
No questions, all set.
All right, so do we have a motion on that license? Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote. Thank you. Okay, we have no gift acceptances, no proclamations/recognitions, our proclamation's already done. So moving on to Town Manager Items, we have a vote to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Oxford and the Town of Auburn for the transportation of wastewater.
Through the chair, thank you very much. This evening, we've brought this to you a couple of times just to, you voted for some extensions on this. Basically, this is an agreement that's probably been in place for over maybe 25 years. Over the years, we've tweaked it and changed it as times change. This is the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Oxford and the Town of Auburn for the transportation of wastewater. I want to thank Joanna Paquin, the DPW Director, and Nick Schwartz, our Assistant DPW Director and Sewer Commissioner, for working so hard on this, as well as to acknowledge the Town Manager in Oxford, Jen Callahan, and their DPW Director, Jared. They, this has been ongoing talks for about a year, and we have come to an agreement that we're very comfortable with. It has been reviewed by their Town Council, it's been reviewed by our Town Council. It has protections in there for if certain thresholds are met with regard to volume, that things would be reviewed. It's, we're very comfortable with it. The changes to the document from what you recently approved are very modest, if anything. A couple of things that were added that we have the ability to revisit in a couple of years or at any point, if a large development project comes before Oxford that may affect this, they would need to come back to us before they approve it. So we're very comfortable with this agreement, and Town Council's reviewed it for legal. If you have any questions, I know Joanna's here, Nick's here, and...
Any questions of the board members? No? Just one question. Are we comfortable with the insurance liability rates?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
All right. And...
I should just mention that because it's an intermunicipal municipal agreement under Mass General Law, the Board of Selectmen of each town has to approve, so your vote is this evening, and I believe Oxford is tomorrow night, maybe? It's this week, I believe. So you would vote and be allowed to sign off on it, then they will vote, and it will go into effect. This agreement that we currently have now expires January 31st, so we don't have...
So if they had any changes, it comes back to us.
Yes, they would not vote any changes without having them come back to you, but it's, hopefully, it's already been vetted, because it's gone through their Town Administration.
So we vote to accept it or approve it as presented?
Yes.
Okay. All right, seeing no further questions, do we have a motion? As presented to us?
Presented.
Okay. Motion, do we have a second? All right, Mr. Carpenter? And Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes, it is a vote. All right, moving on, we have a potential vote on premium pay, ARPA funds for municipal employees.
Okay.
I believe you have some more information?
I do. I am a wealth of information here tonight. Give me one minute, despite the fact that I shut...
Is that what you just floated off, you could just sign that?
Yep.
Just get this. So at the last meeting, so first of all, let me just back up. We had gone to the board with our original proposal for premium pay on November 28th. Then again, on December, I believe, might have been September 12, December 12, we raised it again, and the board asked us to look at a couple of iterations of Option C that had been outlined in the November 28 memo. So I'm just going to pass this on. So rather than, I'll spare you the spreadsheet, and I would, just for disclosure, hopefully, we captured everything. We may, we're going to go back and look at it again just to be sure we're trying to get all the numbers to you for this evening. I just want to thank Gillian Taylor in Ed's office for really doing a great job pulling some data for me. And then, this afternoon, I could pull it all together and try to come up with the, as close as I could get on the figures. And I say that because there may be, we're going to go back and review it again. This isn't the final. But I want to tell you that the original Option C that we provided to you was about $312,000. And that provided for police and fire frontline workers at Police and Fire. It wasn't everyone in the department's frontline workers, Police and Fire, $3,500. Anyone who did occasional inspections, onsite inspections, out of the office, $1,000. All others, $500. A $25, excuse me, $25 fee per vaccination clinic that had been worked. $250 amount for those who received their vaccine booster. And that was the original for 312. That evening, a couple of things were added to the list, and that's what you're going to see tonight. That evening, it was requested to look at a stipend for those 25 fire department employees who worked on the ambulance during that period. And it was proposed at taking a look at $1,000 and then seeing where that got us. And what we did is we went back and we really scrubbed all the payroll, we scrubbed everything to come up with as close to what we could as all the employees who worked in that 15 month period, what percentage of time they worked, if they weren't here that long, if they came in in the middle of it, if they left early. We also added in the retirees. There was a request to add in the retirees. So given the addition of the firefighters who were on the ambulance, so let's call it the ambulance stipend, given the ambulance stipend, the vaccine clinics stipend, which I believe was in another option that moved into C, and the retirees. If you were to give the ambulance personnel $1,000 each, that's $25,000. Adding in the retirees, adding in that, adding in the vaccine clinics, you're looking at $340,575. Hold on.
That's correct.
Okay. I put it in blue. Excuse me, thank you. Thank you. I put it in blue, so it's hard to see it. So that would be $340,000. If you reduce the ambulance stipend from 1,000 to 500, it's $328,75. So it's a $12,500 difference. I would tell you that this makes the assumption that approximately 100 employees would receive the $250 for being boosted for the vaccine. We had, I think, 89 employees that took advantage of the one day that we had given for the incentive. I'm going to assume that there might have been some that either weren't here at the time or somehow weren't eligible at the time, and maybe, so I upped that number a little bit. But I would tell you, this is fairly accurate as far as we know exactly how many months everybody worked, who was here, who wasn't, when they were hired, when they left. So this is as close as we could get for this evening, knowing we will go back in. The one that we don't know is the booster, because we would have to see proof of vaccination to give the $250,000. So this amount is still.
$250.
Excuse me, $250 for the, I'm sorry, for the $25,000 total amount that we've got in there. So this amount is still, it's approximately 6.5%. We were aiming for 6%, we're at 6.5%. I think this is a very nice way to approach it. I think it fairly compensates and respects and recognizes the hard work of everybody and certainly recognizes those who were frontline and had more exposure. It's risk-based, so it does give more to those who were at greater risk. It meets all of the requirements of the federal ARPA funds, and we have removed any employee that was not eligible under federal ARPA as it stands. So these are the numbers. So right now, we're looking at $328,75 if the ambulance stipend was 500, and it only goes up $12,500 to give a $1,000 ambulance stipend. So at 340, and I still think you're in the percentage out of $5 million that we're very comfortable offering.
Any questions of the board members?
I have a proposal more than a question, more about redistributing some of the funds. I've made it clear, I think the number above three is high. I mean, I'm not in favor of this to begin with, but if we could get that number to three, and I would like to propose that we allocate $3,675 to the vaccine clinics, 2,013?
The same number for that.
So the first one, the same number?
Same, yes. So then for the police and fire, if we were to allocate 213,390, which would be 3,000 per, inspections would be the same, and then increase the ambulance from 1,000 to 1,500, that would be 37,500. All others would be 31,945, the same, and remove the booster. So that would put us at 292,510, below the 300 threshold that I would like to be at. I mean, and I'm, 292,510.
Can I ask, does that include the retirees as well?
That was the all others, correct?
Well, the retire, yes, yes, it would, but just to be clear, the retirees are included in all these categories. Some of the retirees are police and fire.
Okay.
And some of the retirees fall under all others. And some, a couple fell under clinics. So just so I'm clear, so that's reducing the police and fire to 3,000, but increasing the ambulance to 500, eliminating, it's 1,500, increasing it by 500, eliminating the booster, keeping the vaccine, the inspections, and all others the same.
That's what I'd like to see. And I mean, I'm even comfortable saying not to exceed 300,000 and allocating up to that, whether it's a little bit more for each of them or however it shakes out. Some sort of accounting issue, or again, my math there for the police and fire was really just, I divided that by the number, so I got 71.13. I don't think there's a .13, but I don't know how you guys did the math to.
Right, so through the chair, it's.
Yeah, there's a allocation for a few individuals within that category that didn't work the entire.
So it needs to change a little.
Yeah.
And that's why I would say like, it doesn't have to be the 292,510 that I just came up with, because I know that number needs to get massaged out a little bit. And again, I'm one person, so if any other board members have suggestions.
Steve, what was the value of reducing it to three? Can you throw that?
213,390.
Through the chair, one thing I think I would caution about putting a not to exceed to 300,000, because as I said, this is the best we could come up with for tonight, but if we find that we missed somebody and we have to add somebody back in, there's a chance it's going to cook over that. There's also a chance we might have done, we have to just do the numbers again very clearly. My guess is if anything, it probably would be maybe a little bit less, especially if you're taking out the vaccine, because that's the one we don't know at this point. But it may, it could potentially go over the 300, and you wouldn't want to leave out somebody if that's the case, if we found someone who wasn't.
Or brings us back to square one.
We're talking the fact we had to go through, you know, 200 employees and look at their hours and their percentage of time, if they were part-time, if they were full-time, how many months they were here. So there's a lot of pieces to it. I just, I just want to make sure there's, if you go with that, you may not, but if you went, that there would be a little flexibility to make sure we captured everybody.
All right. I, I mean, I could be talked into the 1,500 on the ambulance side. I wouldn't want to personally shortchange police and fire as a whole, given the fact that, you know, they had their own unique set of circumstances and challenges that they went through during that time, which I'm sure wasn't easy. So I'm still for the second one, the $340,000 figure, but, you know, I do want to get this forward to a vote as well. So Mr. Carpenter, anything yet?
I like the number of Mr. Chambers, Dave. When we back, we certainly talked about the vaccine, and I just hesitated that time. I thought that we could reallocate that and provide a greater benefit to people who had the highest exposure. So I definitely think the end of this number, there's not enough money in our goal to compensate somebody for what they went through during the unpleasant time for many of us, but certainly it would be a lot worse for those people who are still taking their sick and dying. So it is a $500, which is still, you know, the greatest need in the world, but at least it's a total appreciation for all the people. And I think the government numbers are good in line with the level of their exposure, certainly they also put themselves out there upfront, but they do that every day. I think we're at a good number here. My recommendation to the board would be to do town administration time, we have a heat until we make a change of somebody in the corner office, and we're trying to find to listen to new people in the town office. So if we can agree to the numbers, then give town administration time to finalize the numbers and we can vote on the final number. And then we don't have to worry about $300,000, $305, $302, we can just have a final number.
Through the chair, I just, my comment on that, first of all, I appreciate, I think, I think we're getting there. I'd like to see it come to a vote too, and selfishly state one reason. I've been working on this for eight months. I'm going to be gone next Monday. I don't think it's fair to turn this all over to Ed, to take over and start doing all of this analysis. I can't even begin to tell you the amount of work it is. These Excel spreadsheets are enormous. There's formulas built into them. Sometimes I don't even know what formula I put in. I have to go back and look at the formula. It's complicated. So my concern is by putting it off until sometime when I'm not here, now you're leaving Ed to come in, pick all this up, and start running these numbers again. I think we're, I think we're pretty close. That's why I'm saying, I think if you're a little bit off here and there, but if you could, if you could make a decision tonight, it's still going to take a couple of weeks to go through everything and make sure that we didn't leave anybody out by mistake.
Ms. Roofley, any questions?
No, I mean, I could agree with Chambers and Mr. Carpenter's numbers.
Okay. All right, and do you have those numbers in front of you?
Yeah, I was doing, I was writing them down as we were talking about them.
Okay. All right.
If I may suggest, if you could support, I think what's being presented tonight in whatever fashion, with an amount up to, and then once the payroll, once we go through tweaking this in whichever fashion that needs to be done, once the warrant is generated, we can report back with a final number and make that net adjustment.
Right. Up or down, wherever that number lands. Yeah, okay. All right, so it would be in a vote for approval for tonight, but we'd, so you'd still come back to us giving us that final figure?
Well, I mean, it's going to be in the ballpark of what Selectman Chambers had to calculate, knowing that there may be a minor tweak here or there that's going to move that number either up or down, but that's something we have to work on in the next week or so.
So I'd like to admit that if it's at or around the 300,000, I would approve any numbers that came forward. So it doesn't need to be in the format of a not to exceed, but you would have my commitment that I would.
We need it tonight.
So, and that's, so if you're looking for a ballpark number, I think that 300,000 with the numbers for each individual or each classification, as I stated, with the 3,000 for police and fire, 1,000 for the inspections, 1,500 for ambulance, 500 for others, remove the booster, and vaccine clinics, it's not broken down, but it's 3,675. So what that number ends up being, whether my 292,510 is.
I think it's going to be pretty close, because I see that math you did.
So I don't know what you need from us to proceed, but I would say.
Motion on that, yeah.
So I would, okay. I will, I'll make a motion using those numbers I just stated as the baseline for ARPA expenditures.
You correct me if I'm wrong, just for clarification for the record for Sharon. Vaccine clinics, 3,675. Police and fire at 3,213,390 total. Inspections remaining at 1,000, for a total of 6,000. Ambulance being moved to 1,500. I did not get that number.
37.5.
37.5, thank you. And then all others remaining the same at 31,945 with the removing of the vaccine. Correct. All right. That is the motion. Do we have a second? Okay, motion in a second. And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a no, just on the 3,500, but that's fine. Again, one vote. All right. And moving on to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I will try, through the chair, I'll try, I'm going to run these numbers tomorrow with all of them, run them in the Excel chart, work with Ed this week to try to get it all lined up. It's just, there won't be a meeting till after.
Yep. Yes.
Bill O'Connor, union president for the firefighters' union. On behalf of the members, I just want to say thank you. I know this is an incredible amount of work, and we truly appreciate your consideration, your support.
Thank you. Yeah, and we have one more comment?
Hey, doing. Officer Derek Corshane from the Auburn Police Department, union president. I too also like to commend you on your hard work over those eight months. I know it was a trying time, and it's a lot of work to put in to get to those numbers and, you know.
You guys did the actual work. We're thanking you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to authorization to apply for assistance to firefighters grant, the AFG. And we did get information on that emailed to us.
We did. Through the chair, the fire chief is here to just give you an update on that.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So as the town manager said, I did send an email on Friday with all of our requests, grant requests. So if you have any questions, I'll certainly answer it. This is the assistance to firefighters grant. We're here every year asking the board to support a grant allocation. This year, we are looking to upgrade some of our single-band VHF radios to P25 compliant multiband radios. Total grant ask on that would be $248,672. So seeking for your permission to apply.
Any questions of the board members? No. Ms. Roofley, no questions?
Okay.
And seeing none, town administration, I assume there's no?
No.
All right, do we have a motion? Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. All right, and moving on to the next item, we have the authorization to apply for assistance to firefighters grant, excuse me. Authorization to apply for staffing for adequate fire and safety emergency response being the safer grant.
Mr. Chairman, we can take safer, but there is a second vote for a regional AFG. So we can do safer and then go back, or we can go back now. It's completely up to you.
Let's go back.
Okay. So the second AFG, we are looking to file a regional. Right now, the town of Oxford is committed, and most likely the city of Worcester is going to commit. They provide rapid intervention for us on our run cards. So we're looking to do a three-community regional grant for that rapid intervention training.
Any questions? No, seeing none, do we have a motion? Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes. It is a vote. All right, now moving on to the safer grants.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the board is aware, last year, we applied for a safer grant for 12 positions. Unfortunately, we were not successful in that grant award. So we're asking for authorization to apply for a safer grant for eight positions, because the board did support four new positions. Those members came on on January 1st. So we would be seeking to submit for another grant for eight positions for a total of That it would, it'd be 100% for three years.
Any questions of the board members?
Is the likelihood any better because there's fewer positions, or is it the same likelihood with?
It's tough to say. Not really, because, you know, the city of Worcester was awarded a grant for 30-something positions. It really just comes down to individual need, the amount of grants that are put forward. I would say no, there's no greater success because we're going from eight to 12. I think it's, it really just has to do with the number of applications and flushes out in the process.
And then because we authorized the four additional, does that hurt us?
No. No, because even, even with what, you know, the purpose of the safer grant is to assist communities in order to get to NFPA compliance. So even with the four positions that come on, we're not NFPA compliant. Even if we were to receive these eight, we're still shy of being NFPA compliant. So they look at it and they say, you know, will this grant assist in achieving, you know, working towards the goal of becoming NFPA compliant? We have, the answer to that for us is yes, whether we're applying for 12, eight, four, because we're working towards NFPA compliance.
What number makes us compliant?
We would need, we would need 16 on a shift. We're not going, we, most likely, unless something changes demographic-wise in the community 20 years from now, whatever, we are not going to meet NFPA standards. NFPA standards in daily staffing for, for us. We make up our NFPA compliant through a, a mix of, of things. Uh, mutual aid run cards, making sure that additional engine companies are coming in to help. The number really is 18, including command staff. So we have to put 18 firefighters on scene of a working fire in, within eight minutes. Short of having 18 people on duty, we have to get there through a combination of things, which include mutual aid engine companies from our, you know, from, uh, our mutual aid partners. We're trying to get to what we're basing our safe staffing number in is a direct result of the staffing study. Based on Auburn's actual call volume of over 5,000 emergency calls a year, trying to staff two engines, trying to staff three ambulances, trying to put a supervisor in a car. That's how our number of 12 is derived, based off the staffing study. You know, sh- short of hiring, so we have 18 a shift, we're not gonna be NFPA compliant. So, yes, it, it's a lofty goal, but something would have to considerably change within the community, demographics, call volume double, those kind of things. So the number that we're trying to shoot for at 12 is a direct result of the staffing study.
Regional capacity affect uh, the ability for this town to get a grant? Does the 30 that Worcester got?
No.
Impact us?
Each community is, is, um, looked at individually, this isn't looked at regionally. Yep.
We have a motion. Don't all jump in at once.
No, well, I'm trying to figure, so the motion is, or what we're asked for, is the ability to apply for this grant.
Apply for the safer grant.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chair, so this is to apply. If we were awarded, we would come back before the war, uh, the board, and there would be a vote to, um, accept. And then the board would have the option to accept or deny the grant if we were awarded.
For three years, should we get it?
Correct.
But we're gonna be asking for additional headcount as well, whether we get this grant or not. Because.
Yeah, the safer grant is, correct me if I'm wrong, it's on year-over-year that it's usually applied for.
On an annual basis, you have, a community has the opportunity to apply for safer.
May I ask another question then? Is there any chance that the grant comes back and they offer to, to a portion of it, or is it an all or nothing?
Um, you can't amend the grant, but I will tell you this. If we applied for the grant, but through the budget process, let's say through the budget process, the town gave us an additional four, an FY24. If we were awarded the safer grant, we would be able to use the four positions that we already hired and apply, move those from the budget to safer.
But not the four that we just hired in January?
Correct, because that new fiscal year, new, new grant.
So, and this is where, like, my head starts to burn, 'cause like, if we don't get it, but then we ask for the headcount, then we're on the hook, and then you know we're on the hook, and like, I know the, the need to get there, but it's like, do we just?
I don't, I, you know, in our conversations with the FEMA reps, I don't, I don't think that's how they look at it. You know, you gotta, you gotta understand, there's a group of people that are sitting in the room, you know, fire chiefs, firefighters like myself. I have colleagues that I know that, you know, they fly you out to Wisconsin, and they put you up in a hotel room, you know, for a week, and they sit there and they review safer grant applications. The grant award is, is based on your narrative, and what is it that you're saying that you're gonna do? If I hire these eight people, I'm gonna be able to add additional firefighters to engine companies to get us closer to NFPA compliance. They don't, they have, they have no idea that we may be asked for four positions, and they gave us four positions, and the, but that's not even in the narrative. So they're not making their decision based on that. They're saying, if we give you $800,000, how are you gonna utilize that, that $800,000 to get you closer to NFPA compliance and ultimately make a safer engine company? That's really what the decision is based on. But it, the timing does work, and we actually ran into that situation once here where, um, when we got the safer grant for two positions before, we had just hired two through the budget, and then when we hired them and we were awarded the safer grant, we moved those two people from the budget into the safer grant.
So I would make a motion that we get through the ability to apply for a safer grant.
Time motion, and do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Carpenter? Selectmen to make a decision on this type of decision. Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? And the chair is a yes, it is a votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the discussion on reauthorization of ambulance impact shifts through the ARPA funds.
I'm just gonna invite Deputy Johnson, in case there's a, give him the old.
Come on up here, Deputy.
Just in case there's any questions for the, for the deputy.
Good evening.
Uh, so as I had outlined, uh, in my email, the board had authorized $300,000 last March uh, to, uh, staff a second ambulance six, six days a week, Monday through Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 6:00. Uh, so we're, you know, about a month, uh, coming up on, on one year of that. Those shifts during the day have had a tremendous impact on, on the day-to-day operation during those hours. Um, we've been able to capture, um, more ambulance calls during those peak hours. We've had to rely on, on mutual aid a little less. You know, there's still those days where we have five or six calls going on at the same time, and we have a couple mutual aid ambulances in at the same time. Uh, but the ability to, to have that third truck in the mix, uh, it's been huge, um, over the past year. So, again, just understanding that there's a lot of moving parts here in terms of request for a safer grant. You know, as I had indicated in the email, I will be asking for new positions within the budget. Whether or not those come to fruition is yet to be seen. But, you know, short of those two things, um, I, I gave the board, uh, I attached that spreadsheet to at least give you some options where if you didn't wanna commit to a full year, um, at least giving you that three, six, nine, 12 option. Um, and, you know, maybe the board wants to look at it and just take it three months at a time. You know, and maybe do a reauthorization every three months to figure out where we are, you know, when, maybe we'll get uh, positions in the next fiscal year, maybe it's not four at once, maybe it's, maybe it's staggered somehow. But I just, I, I wanna try to avoid putting ourselves in a position where come March, we lose that impact truck, and we're still several months away from, you know, a new fiscal year, or knowing what the outcome of a safer grant is, we're not gonna know that until probably September. But we wanted to give the board some options, you know, just to look at, and maybe we take smaller bites of the apple, you know, over the next year, instead of committing to another $300,000. Understanding that, you know, we'll be here in a couple of weeks, you know, looking for ARPA money for our communications project. We are well aware that, um, we have like four major projects that we still wanna accomplish with ARPA funds, and, you know, we're, we're trying to take that into consideration, but also trying to avoid losing that impact truck in March.
Questions, all be good.
Um, I apologize, I do not, 'cause did anyone print the spreadsheet? Uh, do you remember? Do you have it on your email?
I have it in front of me, it's about 75,000, so three months.
Thank you, Ms. Roofley.
So, obviously, for myself, our thought is really, as we march closer to May, this is the future's weapon to decide. So I would certainly support a three-month extension and allow the future board, the other thing maybe, to say, and as even if you get behind them, the training process takes a little while, so it probably makes sense for that to work to extend it in those three months, but I'm hoping up to that.
Through the chair, if I may, I think if you pushed it out to the six months, that gets us to the start of the next fiscal year.
Shouldn't that get you out to the next fiscal year if you're.
If it was six months.
It would, yeah, it would roughly April, May, June, yeah, it would, it would put us roughly into September, so it would put us about three months into the next fiscal year.
Right, so to allow the new board member also to, to understand the need.
Is that equal to the 150? I just doubled it. Sarah, do you?
Yeah, it's about 160.
So, I we're gonna call it an impact until you get the staffing approved through town, uh, meeting?
Yeah, I would say, uh, that, you know, the deputy and I have talked about this. Um, I think if, if we could get four more positions and get the groups to 11, which would allow us to, uh, you know, reset the minimum to nine, we a- again, right, un- understanding that there's no, like, perfect scenario. Right now, the groups are at 10, there's a minimum of eight, if we had the impact shift, we'd be at 10. If we got to 11, reset to nine, I wouldn't ask the board to, we, we'd be one shy of where we are. But again, we're, we're realistic, I, I understand that that money eventually is gonna dry up, there's other projects, it's, it's just not there. But if we could get, if we could get the groups from 10 to 11, which would mean four more firefighters, one on each group, then we would be willing to just eliminate the impact shifts and then operate at, at the nine at minimum instead of the 10 at minimum. We'd be comfortable with that. We, we always knew that the impact shifts, as even outlined in the staffing report, you know, it, it's, it was a short-term solution, you know, to a, to a longer-term problem. So that's, that would be our commitment.
Then three months gets us to August, or?
Well, if, March, it would get you to June.
March 17th.
Well, on the other side of it, as well as.
Yeah, no, and I, I will, so I would say, I would ask if, if we could get Mr. Carpenter to agree to six months, I think that would help the next board more than impact that, and then we can make a decision with the new board members sitting.
Make me a motion?
I'll make a motion for the six months.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just thank you, thank the board for this, um, th- this is huge, but also just going back to the ARPA request for the thank town administration for all their work, but thank you to the board for really digesting that, looking at it. That was huge for the employees, and, uh, it's very, very much appreciated, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the fiscal year 24 budget priorities.
Sure. So I know there are people here who are here for this item, and the developer is here also.
Okay.
Please to don't read.
Anything, yep. Could I get a motion to move up Agenda Item 7H? Motion in a second, Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
He's right, he's right over there.
Okay. Just give them a minute.
While he is doing that, I just wanna hand out. So through the chair, if I may, just gonna set the table as to why we're here this evening, what we're here to discuss. At the last board meeting in December, yeah, it was just, I think it was December, was it January?
December.
December, okay.
December, yes.
The board, uh, voted to have the chair and town administration meet with the developer to start to hammer out the terms of a potential developer's agreement, which would be incorporated into a potential LIP that the board is not being asked to approve tonight, either one. We're just here tonight to tell you where we are in that process and what's transpired, kinda get your input on it, and see if we need to move forward, is that clear now?
Yep.
So we, I have not given you a copy of the development agreement, 'cause, as you can see, it's still a work in progress. Uh, we still have red linings going back between us, between our attorneys, to make sure that it's right, so that's, that's the legal instrument. I think what we need to talk today is about what we all discussed when we had a meeting with the developer. It was in, uh, early January.
Yes.
I believe the first week of January that we met. So, right now, uh, the list I just gave you is missing a couple of things that we need to add to it, because just for timing purposes, I didn't have the correct language, and Jim got that to me, but I was already here when I got it, so, again, this is just an open discussion anyway. And Sarah, I'm gonna read it, 'cause I know, um, you don't have it in front of you, so, and we can get it to you. So, when the three of us met with, uh, Jim, what they've agreed to right now is to extend the water line to the end of Perry Place with the approval of the Auburn Water District. Of course, we've had a lot of discussion about that, that's not in our bailiwick. That is something that they would be doing, um, they have to do that to bring the water, they have to talk to the Water District. With that, they're agreeing to provide water services to the edge of the pavement if ever needed, uh, at this point, it's not, but it would give the residents an option down the road, uh, at 29, 32, and 39 Perry Place, again, with the approval of the Water District. So that, those are Water District items. Raise sections of Perry Place to be out of the 100-year flood zone in accordance with all applicable regulations and codes. By that, I mean, uh, the developer met with the DPW director, walked the site again, uh, as she's done several times. They're not looking to raise the entire road. It's portions of the road at certain places that the fire department recommended.
Yes, and during the visit too, when we were walking, um, I think the DPW kinda looked at it, and he, she was gonna speak with the fire department too, but roughly where the, there's two homes that are further down Perry Place, where we would be paving in front of or raising in front of. We would've been raising it, it was like two to three inches. One home in particular, the driveway was really low already, so she was gonna reach out to the fire department to see if, maybe, instead of raising that there, if the fire department would be okay if, you know, during a 100-year flood, if, if, you know, they could drive through a couple inches of water. She was like, she just didn't feel too comfortable with raising that section. Again, it was only a matter of inches, it's not a, it's not a big jump, but she was like, I'd rather just leave it as it is, 'cause I don't want, you know, any. Yeah, so she was gonna, and I haven't touched base with her or heard from her since, so I'm not sure where that ended up, but.
And just to be clear, this is something that the fire department is looking to have them do. Uh, so this wasn't initially something that they wanted to do to cause any types of environmental problems, this is the fire department saying that we should be doing this. The DPW director's concern again is just making sure that those two driveways that may have been impacted don't have any impact, so there wouldn't be any change in the area of those two driveways.
So would safety supersede anything DPW says? Like, if the fire department's looking for a safety issue, would that supersede?
No, they would coordinate with DPW, they don't overrule one another.
Okay.
If the fire department wants something, they talk to DPW and vice versa, so that's why the DPW director talked to the fire department to understand why they were requesting this.
So we're not sure if it was a safety issue?
No, she was, uh, well, it is from public safety, they felt it was necessary to do that. Uh, she was concerned about runoff onto those two driveways, so asked that it not be done in the area of those two driveways. Other than that, she was fine with it.
The majority of the, the raising of the, the, the part that we're really raising is when there's wetlands on both sides. That's where, there's no houses right there. And then by the time when you come around to where the cul-de-sac is, even before the cul-de-sac, there's actually a sign up, I forget what that sign says, but roughly where that sign is, that's back at the elevation that it's supposed to be, so that's prior to there being any other homes that are in that cul-de-sac, that's already at elevation, at the right elevation, so.
So, but if it becomes, if it's a safety request and the fire department wants that, there are other ways to mitigate the impacts on the driveway and runoff, correct?
I would think your stormwater calculations are gonna really take that into account regardless of raising or not.
Yes, yep.
Exactly, so, and I should probably just be clear. What the board is looking to do is to, to make a decision, and, and not tonight, to make a decision, once you've got some information, once you go back and forth with us, and make a decision if you want to go with an LIP, an developer's agreement. Even if you do that, that's not approving the project. The project approval goes to the ZVA. At the ZVA level, all the stormwater engineering, roadway, all that stuff will get, uh, peer reviewed. So, this, that may go away. You know, that may be something that's in there now, but that could change before the LIP, because it has to work.
And, and I wouldn't expect our agreement to supersede that, but I just wanna. And, and I wouldn't expect our agreement to supersede that, but I just wanna make sure that if it goes before another board, that we have the backing or the word that, you know, make it compliant with the request. That's, that's my, my goal here. So I, again, I'm not doing the calculations, but, you know, if it makes sense not to do that, and everyone's in agreement, I'm not superseding that. I just wanna make sure that if it is a safety issue, because whether we sign the lip or not, I believe all the projects are required minimal to meet state, safety standards, so to me, if it's a safety issue, it would happen.
It is, and I'll be clear, I, I don't believe this is a state requirement, this was a fire department recommendation. It will meet all state requirements with regard to safety, but this was something over and above that, which the fire department helped.
And it's on, it is on the existing road, obviously.
And this also, the developer's well aware that they need to work with FEMA on certain aspects of it. So that is on the developers', but they were well aware of any FEMA requirements too, which are the regular, the federal regulations. They also agreed to pave, I don't know, the end, certain sections of Perry Street in accordance with DPW review and recommendation. So in other words, there were, there were a couple of sections of Perry Street, not Perry Place, that seemed to need a, a little bit more smoothing out.
Yeah, so what it was, was, I believe it was Pearl, where Pearl comes down. Initially, we were thinking to, you know, start from right there, and then obviously keep going. Well, a little bit further up Perry Street is still in tough shape, and you can tell where they, you know, they stopped paving a while ago. And when we were, when we went out with DPW, she was like, well, actually, would you mind just going there instead of, you know, starting here? I'm like, yeah, we're here, like, obviously, we'll tie it into the better section of, of the road, so that was the discussion that we had, so.
And then they are offering to widen Perry Place to twenty-four feet, and with the caveat that any additional impervious areas created by the widening would have to comply with stormwater regulations. So you have to make sure, to your point, see that it's, they're still in compliance with stormwater regulations. So nothing's going to be recommended that's out of compliance with FEMA or stormwater or DEB. They have agreed to construct walking trails around their project that they would open access to the public to be able to use those walking trails. They will also install a playground at the project to be open to the public. I would note that they're also not open to the public, but important for people to know, they're also putting in an area for people who live there in the project to walk their dogs. So that is a benefit to the community, because people won't be walking their dogs up and down the street necessarily. I mean, they have every right to, and they may, but this gives them an extra place also of their own, but that is not open to the public just for liability purposes, so that's not in here, but they are, they are doing that. They would provide, you know, we, I'll back up, we had a request from one of the residents, Lynn or Jess had sent us a lengthy email, and you saw it, with certain requests, that we actually got that the morning of, I think, or the day before.
Yeah, we took that to the meeting.
So we took that to the meeting and accomplished, I think, just about everything on there that we could, within reason, accomplish. And that included providing a landscape plan that would provide screening to the abutters. We talked about, the request was for an eight-foot fence or something, but there were, there were other things that we were concerned about.
I, I was concerned about in terms of the overall character of the neighborhood, not just having the strong line of demarcation. You don't really see that in projects these days, it's more natural landscape, you know, natural, well, obviously, the battle will, will persist, but
Right.
natural versus PDC.
It's more aesthetic pleasing.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I didn't say eight-foot fence, that might have been one of them.
Well, no, I'm just saying in general, having a natural barrier is, A, you don't have to worry that over time it's going to degrade, and if these folks eventually sell the property to somebody else, which we all know happens with some regularity as people progress. Now you don't know who's gonna replace X thing, so, and to me, I would prefer that, you know, I know Ron always liked alibites on the plain white. They grow nice and high, and they're low maintenance, so, I mean, and they're not
They're always getting bigger.
unattractive.
Um, yes.
They're always green.
Yeah.
Yep, with the alibites. Planted, and the fence. And again, these neighbors have had nobody for years, and now you're gonna have walking trails, and they're gonna have people that can easily walk between trees as they're growing up in age. So I think it's gonna, without the fence being installed now, it's gonna put a burden on.
I think the landscape plan was to provide privacy, so there is, the plan isn't in place yet. It was an agreement, well, with the landscape plan that provided it.
Pioneer Lane was put in between Waterman Road and Golden Drive. A forest that many of us played in.
A lot of our landscaping is, we do a lot.
Yeah, I'll pass this on to, so Jim has just provided just some photos
Yeah, just some-
to bring, of their existing properties, and what they look like, how they landscape it, that gave us a level of comfort, because to their point, they want this to look attractive, not just for their own, for their own residents, but for the residents who are abutters. This is important to the residents who are gonna live there as well. So we, the plan still needs to be defined.
In, in the other towns that we're working, we did the one in Millbury, the first one in Millbury, we exceeded our landscape plan that we actually provided the town, that they would, they would tell you if you go there that.
So this is existing, is, that's one of the But this is three stories, we're not, are you?
This one's, no, this, that's, this is one of our projects right now, so that's the one in Boyleston that you're, that you're going through right now. And then when you get to Cobblestone Village, that's our one in Millbury, but those are our completed projects. Some pictures. Sorry, just random click off of my, off the printer, and I got some kinda line going through.
So through the chair, if I can go on, because I think you're gonna have to have a lot of discussion about this moving-
They're all the same, all the packets are the same.
Oh, sorry.
Just multiple copies, yeah, if you want.
So in addition to the landscape plan, the developer would provide a lighting plan, showing the lighting to maintain on the property that minimizes the impact on the abutters. Again, that's likely, these are things that are probably gonna come up at the ZVA anyway, but we're saying matter to the residents now that they want it to, that the board was aware of some of these concerns, and the developer would address it. And then in addition, they've agreed to contribute twenty thousand dollars to the town every year for the first five years, so it's a hundred thousand dollars after full occupancy, so once it's, it's permanently built and occupied, to be used for community events. You know, we talked about concerts on the, on the common, we talked about, you know, all the nice fireworks, you know, all the things that are a cost to the town to do for the community, that are good to do for everybody, including residents. What's not on this list, because again, I'm only, I didn't know the details of this, but the fire chief had asked, they had worked, not with the chief, but I believe you worked with the fire inspector and some others there.
Yep, yep.
And the chief had actually stood up at the last meeting and said that they had agreed to some additional fire suppression
Yes.
measures that we wanna make sure are in here, but they have agreed to do that, they're not required under the law to do it. It's over and above what they're required, and Jim, if you can do that-
Yeah, so the stand pipes, we're, we're gonna install those on all the buildings over there. We're only required to do it in the four-story, we're gonna add it to the three-story, he asked that. That's basically so that they can go in, plug right into that, and run their hoses, you know, off of the system in there.
We still, three and four-story?
That's correct.
But other four-story, it's required?
The four-story is required, yep, three-story it's not. So he, he asked us to put it into the three-story buildings, uh, building as well, which is, it's not cheap to do, it's a whole nother system that we have to put in there so that he can hook up for us.
Stories, you wouldn't need it, see?
And then are there two other?
And we widened the entrance, so when you're coming into the community, it's like thirty-four, it's really wide when you're coming in. That's basically so that two emergency vehicles could pass at the same time. And then he wanted us to add more carbon monoxide smoke detectors in the co, in the common areas, because I guess a lot of the hallways and whatnot, they, it's not required by code, but he asked if we could, if we could do that. So those are three things that we talked about, obviously, if there was more things that he was, you know, that he had that was doable, we would entertain.
So in the interim, this agreement was reviewed by their attorneys, we reviewed it, we went back in, in the language of the agreement, not these items, just the general language of the agreement, made some recommendations, then on Friday, you sent it back to me, so I have to get it back. I was at an event in Boston on Friday, so I have to get it to town council to start reviewing it. Town council's going to wanna review it when it's all completed anyway. So he had already done a preliminary review that said, yes, the development agreement is a legal instrument, we can absolutely do that, and we just, he wants to see the terms that are specific to Auburn, because we provided him at that time with no rules. So I think the chair wanted to just bring it back tonight to, you know, we did have a meeting, we are moving on those discussions. There's probably some additional discussions that need to take place. We've talked to the state several times. The state, there was some concern that if the board entered into an LIP, that the state wouldn't necessarily review this or make any changes, and that's, that's not.
Their standard of review would somehow change, and that's just simply not the case.
Right, if there are things that the state wants to recommend to change, they will. I mean, they, they look at, the LIP, yes, it's an agreement of the town to support the project through the development agreement, recognizing, they understand that we, overall, it's, it's a project that we didn't wanna see in that neighborhood, because there's, there's a lot of units. The streets aren't necessarily adequate until they make the investment in the streets, but given that, the board has discussed doing an LIP to try to make it a better project than without the LIP. So I think the concern of the neighbors, and I, I understand, was if you sign an LIP, does this mean it's automatically gonna go through the whole state process, and no one's gonna look at, and they're just gonna stamp it? And that's not the case. Again, it goes from you to the state, who then makes sure that they have to meet all the requirements on the chapter forty-eight. If they don't, regardless of whether you have an LIP or not, that would, that would come into play. They would then, give them a letter to move forward, they take that letter, and they go to the ZVA and apply for comprehensive permit. That whole process starts. Then when they get the consent, comprehensive permit, I believe you have to go back to the state again at the end. So there are many steps along the way. So this board at some point just needs to make a decision if they're gonna enter into an LIP or allow the developer to go forward with the project, and, you know, you are taking the chances, they're gonna get denied at the state? They can't tell us that now. They can't tell us because they don't have a plan in front of them, they can't give you an opinion on a plan they haven't seen, a form. Yes. What, what do you mean by that?
What, what are they gonna do to mitigate, we, we asked for the traffic study.
That, that, that was not discussed, that gets peer reviewed at the ZVA level, that's not a board.
So I do just have a couple of questions, and I've got a couple comments, and people in the community who share everybody's concerns with the total housing. So if we stand Perry Place twenty-four feet, is that with sidewalks, or is that simply way back? Because again, we have an established neighborhood, it would be nice if they were blocked, and they're built, you're gonna be, you're gonna need residents, have a chance to.
So we have about twenty-four feet to work with that we can really, you know, whether it would be all pavement, sidewalk. You know, we did throw that out to DPW, she was gonna, I think, discuss it, get back. The only thing with the sidewalk is obviously, there is no other sidewalk on Perry, so even if Perry Street, so even if we brought the sidewalk down, it would just end right there, so it's not necessarily like somewhere where, you know, it's going to like the downtown, or there's another spot that we're gonna be connecting to.
One is it doesn't have a sidewalk, so a lot of people don't walk on the street. But this would encourage people to get to know their neighbors, and, and even the new neighbors have an opportunity to kind of see what the rest of the street looks like. I know that there is some sort of language that, after a certain period of years, and there's some question as to how long it is that the affordable units can go away. So my hope would be that we could work in a commitment that those stay for, you know, a minimum of thirty years, because the need isn't gonna go away, and we don't have very much land. Ten to twenty is what I've heard, ten to twenty. So, I mean, if we can get a commitment that those stay in place for thirty years, we don't have a lot of land to develop, you know, and obviously, much like this land, land is left is significantly challenged when it comes to utilities and everything else. So we're to be able to pick people back, and trust that we, so I would say, to be clear, you know, ten years beyond what the state requires, you could have, you know, with a maximum of thirty years, if it's one time, you know, if it's ending, you have to manage it. Do you have any concerns with that, Mr. President?
I don't, I just wanna talk to, you know, everybody on my side, I don't see any issue with that though.
With all good intentions, you think you're gonna, none of us live forever.
Yeah.
Circumstances change, you may find that you have to sell this piece, and some others, in order to make your business viable. So none of us can say, hey, forever, we're gonna take care of it. You know, you're gonna do the best that you can for the time that you own, but, you know, I just don't want it to become an overgrown area or something that the town would necessarily feel the need to get involved in maintaining. You know, they are lovely features, but again, it's just, that's my concern as far as who's gonna maintain it and what resources. So whether the ZVA asks for a bond for a period of time, if that's something that they can do, you know, some sort of assurance that should you go away, we can, and those things become a problem, we will have the resources to at least keep them open to the public and to the residents who will live there. You know, beyond that, you know, I think.
I got your notes there, we'll certainly bring that up at the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
The needs.
Right.
Ms. Roofley, any questions, concerns?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Right, so that was really it, unless anybody else has anything to add, just really just wanted to update the board members and where things stood.
Well, I, I had asked also about the possibility of increasing the twenty-five percent affordable, I don't know if any-
Did, and you emailed that to the board, right?
I stated it.
You stated it here too?
Okay. Um, I just didn't know if any discussions took place, if that was a viable option to increase that affordability.
The issue is, is with like, new construction right now, our costs are so high, it's unbelievable. And, you know, with, I mean, the price of everything that we're doing. Yeah, it was, it's, it, yeah, it was just discussed, and honestly, it's been, we're, we're doing, we have multiple these going on, and it's kind of the same thing. It's, we're trying to, but obviously, with the cost of new construction, it is very, very difficult.
If you don't ask, so.
Sure, absolutely, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Much, and that, you know, if, if you're willing to work with extending that timeline, that also helps us out as a community, and that's, that's really, thank you for at least-
Yes.
Just got a little meeting?
Yeah, I think, I'm gonna turn to Ed.
Yeah.
We're probably for the next meeting. But yeah, I think, you know, we, we have, obviously, we have good contacts and a relationship with people in the state, and, you know, they give us proper guidance as to, you know, what you can and should and shouldn't do, and how to proceed, and, you know, we're, we're comfortable with the information we've received from the state. I think we made a lot of progress. Obviously, and I'll say we asked for it, and we understand why, but we did ask for a reduction in units, we asked for a reduction in height. But it's clearly, it's not cost, it's not feasible to do that and get the development and afford the development. The costs are, I will tell you, the cost of construction now. The costs are, I will tell you, the cost of construction have doubled if not more than that.
Like tripled.
It's tripled.
Yeah, it really has, it's unbelievable.
So to reduce the amount of units, they're bringing the income. Because don't forget, this project's not receiving any funding from the state.
Yep.
This is a little different than a Mary D. Stone or Julia Bancroft, where they're seeking tax credits. This is privately funded. So when it's privately funded, you've gotta generate the revenues to cover the costs.
All right, so we will wait for the attorneys to get back to us with a more polished product and we'll set up another meeting to finalize these, you know, these
Right, and once things are finalized, then it will go on the development agreement and then our town council will see it again as a whole.
Thank you, board.
Thank you for bringing those in, that, I think that was helpful. I, I have to say, it, it helps with the visual. I, I think for me anyway, sitting in that meeting, I liked to see what some of their other projects looked like, what kinds of design they have, what kinds of materials that they use. Because you do wanna make sure that it's complimentary, that it looks nice. It's important. And it's not just for the residents who already live there now, it's for the residents who are gonna live there in future. They're still our Robin residents and we want it to look nice for them. And the designs that we were looking at, they, they are attractive and hopefully with the landscape
It's, it is, and, and, yeah, I mean, we have two completed, completed projects that are up and rented. Um, one has been there for, we've had that one for a couple of years now. The other one was just finished last year. We have one under construction right now that's probably about halfway through. We just, Boylston is starting and in the spring, we have another sixty-four unit building that we're starting there and then actually signed one, a lip in Millbury. So we're, we've established that we can build them, finish them, maintain them, and you can go through any of the properties. And Millbury was thrilled with us over on Cobblestone that, you know, with everything that we did, we went above and beyond and they would, you could reach out to them and they would tell you. Because I know Boylston actually did reach out to them quite a bit and, and, you know, and they signed the lip with us, so.
And just to be clear, so when I say the design is nice, again, given that there's going to be a project there, the preference that have been no project there is, you know, so I don't want people to misunderstand and say that we, we think it's wonderful to put a hundred and fifty units. I've told you this, we think it's, we think it's a large project in a small area, but if it's going to happen, let's make it a better project. Let's make it as best as we can for the residents who live there now and the residents who are gonna live there in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Do we have any, uh, any edits, questions on the December twelfth minutes, two thousand twenty-two? Oh, my apologies, we jumped
Yeah, we did.
Completely forgot about that. All right, getting back on track, we're going to, uh, seven F, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget priorities and guidance.
So through the chair, and I will turn to Ed for the bulk of this, because it's budget. But every year, we like to come to the board right before we're preparing our budgets and just see, you know, we, we hear you throughout the year, we don't only ask you once during the year, but we get your feedbacks throughout the year, try to incorporate any of your priorities into the budget. I'm gonna turn to Ed because he's in the process of just starting the budget, started the first two meetings today.
So what's making the process somewhat complex this year is the new, new administration. So their budget numbers aren't coming out until mo, roughly March one, as we learned, uh, at the MMA conference, uh, last week. So from a revenue perspective, it's difficult to determine or to project what the expectation is gonna be. But keeping that in mind, as these, as these pieces come together, we always seek guidance from the board. And I, I know you heard, um, the, the fire chief speak on staffing issues or whatever. Is, is something like that a priority of the board or are there any other priorities that you would like us to focus on? So we can address it as we're sitting down with a departmental, uh, request. And to speed up the process, so when we do make a recommendation, it's nice to know what the board would like to see built into the budget, uh, so it doesn't delay things.
Okay. With that said, do we have any priorities?
However, I'm not going to be here, so my general feeling would be, as in years past, keeping down the position, trying to improve the status of those that we know are not competitive with our neighboring communities, because we don't wanna lose people to neighboring communities. And should they choose out of their own volition, say whatever, even believe, we definitely wanna get somebody, uh, their term of work or whatever, come. I mean, they don't put my son up to be a project master or planner and the cost of that, and at that time, you pay for twenty-six, twenty-seven years, or finally, it's now fifty, sixty, but It's been twenty-seven years, so it certainly hasn't been, um, and we know the cost of education has gone much, much higher than what that does. So, you know, trying to even those things out for people and, uh, keeping the budget as low as you can do it, which you have practice with. So I know that you and your team all will do the best that you can with what you have to work with.
I think we are and have been all along conscious of the current economic climate in what, how that impacts our residents on a day-to-day basis. So we try to minimize as best we can the level of taxation, to offer them some relief. I think we can provide evidence to show that we've done that. But we're also dealing with increased cost across the board, whether it be fuel, whether it be other utilities, whether it be just the cost of vehicles is through the roof. In order to maintain the fleet, it's gonna cost us more money. So we're trying to get, be creative, we're trying to, um, um, I, I think, address that in a, in a, um, financial prudent way. But sometimes it becomes difficult and it, we're just trying to get creative. But anyway, we'd like to fold in your priorities as well and keep that in mind as we're building the budget.
So, so cars come into town, so we can utilize them.
I don't know if that would be constant.
No, so I, I don't wanna direct things that are going to increase the budget.
I know you guys try to keep it flat. And one of the things that is very costly but affects everyone from town is the road pavement. And I know that cost has skyrocketed. So if there are funds without increasing, I'd like to see a little bit more go towards that so we can improve some of these roadways. And, you know, as flat as we can keep it, that would be my priority. And understanding the need, you've got very respectable department heads who are all going to write their plans and all be looking for things. Uh, I'd like to hear what, what's a priority for them and then help set some of those decisions while, again, being financially responsible.
I can tell you, you know, we just started meeting with some of the departments to go over their requests and even from a IT perspective, the cost just to maintain it within the now, next year, as it relates to this year, it's pretty significant increase. And those are the kind of issues that we're dealing with. Of course, that's a priority, we have to, you know, we have to support and maintain our current infrastructure, whether it's through software agreements or hardware agreements. Those are fixed costs that, that are going up.
Ms. Ruthley?
Uh, no, I mean, I agree with Mr. Chambers and Mr. Carpenter, the best you could do to keep it, uh, pretty flat would be great.
All right, again, I would think, I would say Mr. Casnovich as well, I think you, we all kind of agree that we understand there's increased costs and, so I, I, I trust you.
So just based on the feedback, uh, I know we have HPACs that's coming underway and, um, I, I think we should prioritize items that are gonna get us the return faster, um, in addition to just maintaining. So projects like in energy efficient upgrades or reducing our costs on other avenues are things we should probably see sooner rather than later to help the long term. If there are things that your department has to recommending, like fit that bill, I think we should see those.
And anything else to add on that or no?
All right, moving on to, uh, request the board to consider and vote upon a member to present the select board on a working group for the housing production plan.
Yes, uh, through the chair, there is a memorandum packet from our town planner, Adam Bernard. And, uh, just by way of background, so the town, five years ago, uh, put together a committee and we developed a housing plan. We submitted it to the state, we received approval, and part of that is the housing production plan, which is part of all this. It ties into housing and how do we get the numbers off and, uh, that plan is a five-year shelf life. So we applied last year, it acquired in September, technically on it, it'd be September. But we were applying for state grants and there wasn't the money to get the project done last year. The state is aware of it, they're comfortable with it, they know we're starting the process this winter. So, uh, we did finally get funding through CMRPC, through the, uh, DTLA, um, it's a local technical assistance grant, that there were not enough funds before now, but now they're in place. So this is an update to the housing plan, we never had one before. So the last time we did it was a massive undertaking because it was brand. Now we're doing an update, which is much easier to do. So, uh, we were just wondering if a member of the board, there'll probably be a kind of a steering group or an advisory group that would be involved to bounce ideas off of similar to what we had before. Maybe a formal committee. And, again, the difference being if you've got some town employees on it, then it will be a group, not a committee, because you have, under the charter, you have to have a committee of the residents. So whatever the word is called, committee or group. Uh, if the board would like to have someone participate in those meetings or you just want us to give you updates on it as well, but we are reaching out to, I think, the planning board and a couple of other, um, I think maybe economic development committee, just to see if anyone's interested in participating. Uh, you don't need to make a decision tonight, if you wanna think about it. The process is probably gonna get started in the next few weeks. Uh, it would be nice to have a member of the board as the liaison to that, but understanding that you all have a lot on your plate, so if you just want updates from us, that's fine too.
I just ask that Mr. Chambers and Ms. Ruthley, um, just consider taking on that position and then just report back to us, completely your call. Mr. Chamber, excuse me, Mr. Carpenter, you stated you're not running and I think this would, for me, possibly qualify into that forever ban based on my profession, which I'm not really interested in doing again, very much. So.
It's okay. I recommended it in two thousand and six, it was part of the master plan. So it only took ten years for it to happen, but, you know, it's better late than never.
And, and it's a great plan, I'm only saying that Ms. Ruthley did it before, did a, did a really good job. But that would be fine, I think it's just something, if you can let us know, uh, if there, if there is someone who's gonna be a liaison at your next meeting, you can take a vote for that.
Yep.
And if you just wanna keep it informal and have us report back, um, our town planner will be happy to keep you in the loop. My guess is the process is probably gonna take, mm, six to eight months.
Yeah. There are two former planning board members, so
There are two former planning women.
They might, so, they might know something about that, so.
My question is, however it's organized, will there be formal notice of meetings coming out? Or is it just the group will meet? Like, is it one of those
Open meeting or outside, or is it?
Yeah, I do
If it's, if it's actually, uh, if it's a public, if it's a public entity, like a committee or board, it has to be a public meeting notice. Even if it's an advisory group, we've always had advisory groups have public meetings. But I, I, I would say that it's going to be, um, at that point, CMRPC will be working with Ed, with the town planner. CMRPC is a consultant of the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. They are kind of guiding us through this process, so I would defer to them on how they wanna run the process. Do they actually do that? I know there's several public meetings at a certain point during this where the draft plan comes to the board, the final plan comes to the board, uh, so there's a lot of requirements already of that.
All right, and back to the minutes, did anybody have any edits to the minutes of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two? Seeing none, do I have motion paper?
So, hurry.
Second?
Second.
All right, and Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And, and, yes, on to our stability.